This meeting is called to order, invocation, pledge of allegiance.
I'm gonna be, Mrs. Van Zant is gonna be leading the invocation and the pledge. Steve Van Zant has food poisoning, our chaplain, so I just appreciate your prayers for him, but his wife, Mrs. Van Zant, is going to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Okay.
Just want to say how grateful we are to serve this community. It's a wonderful community. We had our annual, we had our annual fire banquet Saturday night, and the chief Rhodes talked about how every month, the natural disaster, either by violence of nature or violence of man, had come across our departments this year. And we are just so grateful for the favor and the safety God has provided that none of our men or women in service were injured in any way. And so, we have a little saying, "If God brings it to us, he can get it through us." And I think we find this year to be faithful. Let's thank him. Father, tonight, we thank you for your blessings. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to serve you. We ask tonight, Lord, that whatever you bring to us, you'll lead us through it with the dignity, with peace, God, and with humility before you, recognizing that your hand has blessed us and kept us safe, and for that, we're grateful. Thank you. Amen.
Now then, the announcement, let me, let me make one quick announcement first. Dale Clark is, Councilman Dale Clark is absent tonight. He's sick at home, and we wish him well. And the rest of the announcements, Assistant City Manager Chuck Barnett.
Your head's bigger than mine, but I meant that as a compliment. Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. For those who are watching on cable, and I can't look at you and do this with a straight face, Mayor, I appreciate you wouldn't stare straight at me. Tonight's meeting's the only one we're gonna have in December during the holidays. The regular scheduled meetings will begin again on the second, fourth Mondays of the month, resuming in January the fourteenth meeting. In addition, the monthly meetings of the Fire Services Board, the Beautification Board, are also canceled for December and resume in January due to the holidays. A special thanks goes to the volunteers and staff who helped make the annual Christmas dinner at the Halton City Senior Center for the Halton City Seniors and Disabled. For, it was a success, but this event took this past Saturday at the Senior Citizens Center. Meals were delivered to a record eighty-five shut-ins who cannot make the trip to the center for the dinner. With nineteen delivery routes which were established to cover the entire city, volunteers brought meals and gifts to everyone on the list. We had volunteers from the Taps and Toons, which helped with the deliveries, and we had members of the Code Blue from the Summerfield Homeowners Association, which donated gifts. A total of one hundred and twelve people were welcomed at the senior center for dinner. This past weekend, the Halton City Recreation Center also served as a stop on the Fort Worth Transportation's Authority Tour of Lights. Volunteers boarded the buses and led everyone in sing-alongs with Christmas carols, and Mr. Santa himself and Mrs. Claus were on hand to welcome riders to Halton City and to wish all a very Merry Christmas. A total of fifty-two buses made the trip Saturday evening through our city, and thirty-three more came through on Sunday. Tonight, the judging for the annual neighborhood decorating contest begins. Awards will be presented in three categories: Best Use of Lights, Most Creative, and Best Use of a Theme. To cover all of the neighborhoods, the city has been divided into six sections for the judging, so they will cover all of the streets. Recognition will also be presented to city blocks, having ninety percent of their homes decorated in the block. The results are expected to be available this Friday and will be posted on the Government Access Channel twenty-seven and also on the Halton City website. Community calendars for the two thousand eight are available at all Halton City public buildings. You may pick one up after the meeting tonight here at City Hall. I place those out in the hallway. The calendars are free and feature the winning photos from the two thousand seven Images of Halton City photo contest. The city's, the second electronic sign is also being installed at Halton Road Park and is expected to be operational within the week. This is a baby version of the one that we already have down on Broadway Park. It is a smaller version of the one, and we're planning to have that one operational again at the end of this week. Both will be used to keep the public updated about city-sponsored events. The library's annual bedtime Christmas storytime will take place Thursday, December the twentieth, beginning at six-thirty. That'll last about an hour. Children and their parents are invited to enjoy crafts, stories, and refreshments. Parents are also invited to bring their cameras, take photos of their children along with the man himself, Santa Claus. The Halton City Police Association is collecting food and gifts through the Gary Hires Memorial Toy Drive and the Christmas Providers Program to benefit those in need. We announced this at the last meeting, non-perishable food, new unwrapped toys, toiletries, and other items are being collected and will be redistributed during the holidays. Collection boxes are located at the Halton City Law Enforcement Center, the Recreation Center, and the reception area here at City Hall. Families needing assistance may call for an application or stop by the Law Enforcement Center, and that location is 5110 Broadway Avenue. If you're like me, I wonder every year what I'm gonna do with my real tree. I can't keep it up all year long, especially when my wife starts complaining about the dropped leaves and nettles and everything on the floor. I E S I will be picking these trees up at the curb, or you may recycle them by dropping them off at the I E S I Convenience Center, which is located at twenty-one twenty Minutes Drive. That is located just south of Highway one-twenty-one. This year, the city will not, and I repeat, will not, be collecting trees for recycling, which has normally been the place, at the empty lot next to McDonald's on Belknap Street. Again, if you want to bring them to the curb, or you can take them to the Convenience Center, you can do either one of those for your recyclable trees. In the observance of the holidays, the city offices will be closed on Monday, December the twenty-fourth, and Tuesday, December twenty-fifth. There will be no trash or recycling services on Tuesday, Christmas Day. On Monday, December thirty-first, the library will close at six P.M. instead of eight P.M. All offices will be closed on New Year's Day, Tuesday, January the first. With that, I wish, wish the mayor and the council and everyone that's listening and who is present a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate that. First item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Have a motion disposed? Mr. Holcomb.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Ms. Branson.
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one and two. Any discussion? Please rest your vote. That is unanimous. Item three, flooding and erosion issues. This will be an updating discussion on recent flooding and erosion issues. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, I'm gonna start off with the Skyline Banner area, but actually, I probably have less to say about it than I do the Big Fossil Creek area. The only thing I want to add to the Skyline Banner area is that property owners are still dealing with their properties down there, and unfortunately, when we, since we were down there a month ago, more debris has, has occurred, has been dumped there from illegal dumping. The Mobile Home Parks Association put up gates. They're gonna be putting up some cabling around it, kinda like a fence, a cable fence around it, but that still has yet to be, be done. Once that's done, that should mitigate that a bit. Last meeting, we told you about some properties are gonna be going towards the Housing Board, and we've, we're now down to eleven properties we're gonna be taking to the Housing Board, and that's what other communities may call their substandard building board, or the board that condemns structures. We'll be taking eleven of those, of which six of them have structures on them. The other properties have partial structures. They still need to be taken to the, to the board, but they're problematic, but they'll be taken to them next week and, and whole pending that. If the, if the board finds, does condemn those structures, the owners have thirty days to, to take care of it. If not, then the city has the ability to go in there and has the legal ability to go in there and take care of it, and then we'll be placing liens on it. If that's something we need to do, I'm not saying that's what we will be doing, but that we, we finally have the legal ability to do that. So, you may hear some of, more of a definite update on that particular issue on the meeting of the fourteenth. Regarding Big Fossil Creek and the erosion issues there, the, there's still some things that still need to be worked out. The, the council will be considering later this week an item to award an engineering contract to a firm to design repairs to the erosion issues up there. It's, this is the first step in trying to determine what's, what the issues truly are and what it's gonna take to fix it. It's, I'll probably be meeting with the homeowners later on, schedule something with them and brief them on what the issues are, but that'll be Thursday night. They'll be having a special meeting here, seven o'clock, to consider that item, along with a couple of other items that are gonna be considered later tonight, assuming those things pass. Those things will be on the agenda as well. Other than that, I'll take any questions on either one of those issues from...
Nothing from up here? Any, anybody in the audience have any questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Next, under the public hearings, item four, ordinance number O-two-double-zero-seven-dash- O-twenty-six-dash-fifteen. This is a conditional use permit. CU-dash-double-zero-four-dash-oh-seven will conduct a public hearing and consideration interaction on the application of Anamish Bowles on behalf of Thomas Road Properties for a conditional use permit with site plan approval for an eight-thousand-square-foot metal manufacturing facility on Lot twenty R-three, Block Three, Golden Gardens Edition in the M-two Heavy Industrial District located on the west side of Thomas Road, containing approximately point-four-one acres of land locally known as twenty-four-twenty-one Thomas Road. This is the first reading. Mr. Roy Castro's gonna tell us about that. Roy?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The applicant is proposing to relocate a metal manufacturing facility from the city of Fort Worth to this subject site that you just mentioned, Mayor. Exhibit A is, is evidence of the site plan, and Exhibit B is an overview of the performance standards that's submitted by this company. The fiscal impact at this point is none, and the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven voted four to two to recommend approval of the conditional use permit request to the city council. On your package there, you have the attachments, ordinance O-two-thousand-and-seven-zero-two-six-fifteen. You have Exhibit A, as I mentioned, the site plan, and Exhibit B, the permit overview. And I stand to answer any of your questions, and I believe the applicants are also present here tonight.
Any questions for Roy from the dais? Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, Roy, I just wanted you to, as we talked in pre-council, this is an application for a conditional use plan, which means that in the future, should this property ever be sold, it would revert back to its original zoning. Is that correct?
That is, to my understanding, that is correct, in the sense that, you know, once you approve it, though, no, once you approve it, I stand corrected, I believe Mr. Olson mentioned this, that they will be legal non-conforming, and they will be able to remain.
Right, but, but if the property were sold to another, they could not change that conditional use permit. It would not revert to all of the definitions under the M-two zoning district.
Let's, let's let Wayne address that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the, the current zoning is M-two industrial, so any authorized use in the M-two industrial zoning district is currently allowed. The conditional use permit that's on the agenda tonight would allow, in addition to that, the metal manufacturing facility. This would run with the land.
Okay.
It could be sold to another user, as long as they complied with the conditions of the conditional use permit, but it, it could be sold, the zoning and the conditional use permit do run with the land.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Castro? From the dais, okay? Roy, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the, from the audience regarding this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion disposed. Oh, I thought I'd just asked for people to, gotta say the, oh. Okay. I have to say the words? We'll do this again then.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay? I'll now open the public hearing. Is there, is there anyone who wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing.
Bill? Mayor, normally, we have the applicant come up and, and present something. Does the, is the applicant here?
They're here. I, do you, would you like to hear from them?
Well, did they want to say anything about this, this plan?
Does the applicant have anything that they'd wish to say, or, come on up, introduce yourself.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and honorable members of the council. It's an honor for me to be able to relocate myself to Halton City, if you all permit that. What we do is, we manufacture very complex-shaped parts, just like plastic folks can make very complicated shapes. We make it in a similar manner, but instead of being just plastics, we make it out of metals, ceramics. So we do a lot of work for the oil and gas industry, and some of our stuff, we do quite a bit of R and D work for supporting our troops, Army, Navy, and Air Force. That's what we do primarily. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any, any questions? Mr. Sutton?
Yeah. Looks like you're doing some composite work, too, metalwork that, that has particulates in it, or...
Yes, sir.
And have you ever had any complaints with the noise with your neighbors in Fort Worth?
Absolutely not.
Not? Okay, yeah, because the machines that I saw looked like they were pretty low-noise machines as far as...
Very low noise, yes. I think, John, would you like to, would you like to comment because you took a...
My name is John Clardy, and I'm with Thomas Road Properties. We're the partnership that owns the property, and I went over to Anamish's business, and I personally spent about two hours over there. I brought a decibel meter over and some other equipment, and I can tell you, the amount of noise in there was so low, it was just astonishing. In fact, I've been involved with the ownership of numerous buildings on this street, and he's probably the most benign of anybody on the street, and I can state that personally from having owned the other businesses. And, and I'm a person, I've been around Halton City a long time. My first job, when I was sixteen years old, was at Leighton and Belknap, my father's company, and I'm gonna be here for a long time more. And I told Anamish, I couldn't come before this counselor or anybody else to say anything that I didn't believe in, because I have to live in this city and deal with anything that I say. So I feel very, very comfortable in telling you that you've got a tenant that, or hopefully new owner in this building, that will blend well with the surroundings he's in. He does a process that there's less than twenty people in the world that do it. It's very quiet. The limit of the odor I could smell in there reminded me of towels being dried in a high school gym locker. That was the closest odor I could come to describing it to you. Very, very, very benign, and I feel very, very comfortable about having him in the particular environment for which this property is located.
I'm sure with all my colleagues, we thank you for choosing Halton City to locate in.
Thank you.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes, sir. What about disposal of wastes? Since you are making parts, you're gonna have metal scrap, what about disposal of waste?
Well, yeah. One of the things we had happen back in Fort Worth was, we used to keep some buckets of our scrap. It got taken away. It cost quite a bit, even the scrap itself. So what we would typically do is, we would sell it to the folks in the metals industry. They would pay a good price for it.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowles.
Thank you very much.
Are the, are we now ready to have a motion to dispose? Mr. Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number zero-two-thousand-seven-zero-two-six-dash- oh, dash fifteen with a conditional use permit dash-oh-oh-four-dash-seven. First reading.
And Mr. Holcomb?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number O-two-double-zero-seven-dash- O-twenty-six-dash-fifteen, conditional use permit dash-double-zero-four-dash-oh-seven. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Next item on the agenda, still have it under a public hearing, this is item five, ordinance number O-two-double-zero-seven-dash-O-twenty-seven-dash-fifteen, conditional use permit, CU-dash-double-zero-five-dash-oh-seven. Conduct a public hearing and consideration interaction on the application of Robert Doran for a conditional use permit with site plan approval for an automobile motorcycle fabrication facility on a portion of tracks, four C-two-A-one and four C-two-C, G.B. Stanley Survey Abstract thirteen-seventy-nine in the M-one Light Industrial District located on the west side of Minutes Drive, containing approximately five-thousand-fifty-four square feet of leased space. Suite B, locally known as twenty-three-thirty-three Minutes Drive, Suite B. This is for the first reading. Mr. Castro?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Once again, the applicant, Fats Speed and Custom, which are currently located at thirty-four-sixty-one Charles Street in North Richland Hills, is applying to open up a business here locally in Halton City, as you mentioned, twenty-three-thirty-three Minutes Drive, Suite B. He is requesting a conditional use permit for an automobile slash motorcycle fabrication facility. Welding and fabrication of chassis parts will take place, and the components are the main performance standards. Attached, you'll see the site plan, which compromise or consists of Exhibit A, and then a permit overview, which would be Exhibit B. Fiscal impact is none, and at their November twenty-seven, two thousand and seven meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this conditional use permit request to the city council. And once again, the attachments, ordinance O-two-two-thousand-and-seven-zero-two-seven-fifteen, Exhibit A, the site plan, and then Exhibit B, the permit overview. And again, I believe we have the applicants here present for this.
Thank you. Any questions for Roy on the, from the dais? Thank you, Roy. And I'll open up the public hearings part of this agenda and ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment or ask questions. Okay, seeing none, I'll...
Bill, do you think, or Mayor, we oughta have that...
Do you, you wanna come up and say a few things, or...
Yeah, good evening. My name's James Javak, and that's my brother Frank Javak over there, and we're just, pretty much just hoping for the opportunity that Halton City will give us to follow dream. It's just something we've been thinking about for a long time, you know what I mean? And now that we're together down here, we're just, you know, hoping for the opportunity.
Any, any questions for the applicants?
Just want to say thank you for choosing Halton City on behalf of my colleagues.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else have comments or questions while the public hearing is still open? No? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion disposed. Mr. Cabano?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number O-dash-two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-two-seven-dash-one-five for this conditional use permit dash-zero-zero-five-dash-zero-seven on the first reading.
And Mr. Sutton?
That's for a second.
Mr. Hutchison? Do you have a question or a comment? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number O-two-double-zero-seven-dash-O-twenty-seven-dash-fifteen, CU-dash-double-zero-five-dash-oh-seven on the first reading. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is approved unanimously.
Mayor, if I could, the two applicants, we, we're gonna go ahead and do the second reading of these, of these ordinances on Thursday night at seven. That's contrary to, I was talking to somebody, I think it was you, John, wasn't it? We had to move it back to seven because of some other stuff, so it'll be seven o'clock Thursday night. We'll do the second reading, and hopefully you guys will be able to get going. Okay?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our visitor, Citizens Forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request forum and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the Open Meetings law. Our first speaker, Lori Fielder, would like to speak to us about pit bulls. Lori?
I wanted to thank you in advance, Honorable Mayor Bill Lanford and city council members for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Lori Fielder, and I've lived in Halton City for twenty-five years, and I'm here to speak to you about regulating pit bulls in our city. I just need your help in making this happen. My husband and I recently lost our dog, Camry, to a pit bull attack in our own backyard, and I feel that we need to make some changes to help protect our loved ones and our loved pets. Halton City has, has a city ordinance in place for a dangerous animal, but they're, but it's, it's there for something that has already happened. Basically, you know, after something has happened, then the animal is deemed dangerous. What I'm trying to do is make, take more, a more proactive approach, and making it a breed-specific thing to make, to identify a pit bull as a dangerous animal. And, and, you know, why should we wait till something bad happens? I've been doing a lot of research on the pit bull breed, and this is basically what I found, that the pit bull breed is something that man has created by crossing a bulldog and a breed that no longer exists. But the characteristics, characteristics that were looked for were mainly aggression and strength. So my point is that the pit bull itself is strong enough to kill a human, and so I'd like to take a proactive approach in Hal, in Halton City to help protect everyone from that by having stricter regulations on this particular breed, for people to have to have, you know, like a six-foot fence, and they have to make sure that that dog is secure, that it's registered with the city, you know, to say, "I have a pit bull. It's a dangerous animal," and to post that, you know, when they come to our city. I'm not looking for a ban, because I know what a ban is, you know? I'm not looking to do that. I know it's problematic, but, and I totally understand that, but I'm just looking to bring awareness to all of our citizens. There is a problem with, it's very prevalent in our neighborhood, in my, on my street particularly, that they roam a lot. I want people to, to take more, take more action, you know? I want the citizens to take more action, but I need your help in with the ordinances part of it, you know, to say that it's gonna make it tougher for people to, you know, be careless or, you know, because I don't want to see a child or a human hurt, you know? It was hard enough to, for my dog to be ripped apart, but I know we don't want anything further than that to happen. So I'm... So I'm here, and I, I'd like to present my notebook here, that I have all the research and proposals in it. If I could submit that for your review and consideration, whenever you can, take a look at it.
Sure. Bring it up here. Thank you.
But that, that's the reason I was here tonight. I didn't, I knew we couldn't accomplish anything tonight, but I wanted to present it to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Our next speaker is Bill Journay. The subject is education.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Last Friday, I got this in the mail from BISD. You guys are familiar with that. And the next day, I got, I got the Dallas Morning News, and it speaks of the decline in urban ISD may jeopardize fundings. And after reading this, this, some of these BISD thing, partnership, I put two and two together, and I got seven. Okay? I'm amazed that the BISD would have the audacity to flaunt their public newsletter half Mexican. With our hospitals, jails, welfare, and charity imagination stretched, running over, or going broke over the influx of illegal immigration, our evasive ruling class seems to salivate at this lucrative, destructive, and outlaw behavior against the struggling American working class citizens. We have many in our midst that neither business, social, non-political leaders or political leaders want to recognize. From, from those who will brag about being single parents, living off of government welfare from cradle to grave, to our exist, to our ex-convicts, most deserving a second chance, dropouts, the willing elderly, schoolchildren, part-time, and summer jobs, and many much more deserving of our jobs, assistance, and education with our citizenry. But quality of life and standard of living seems to be reserved for evasive and deceptive ruling class, both business and political. Our problem, our problem really isn't illegal immigration, but the unbridled greed and lack of responsibility on the part of leadership that plagues our ruling class from our nation's, ruling class from our nation's conception, and the nasty reputation that hangs on leadership today like moss in a swamp. Greed has no conscience. Money no morals. Neither are, are they worthy gods of worship for our nation. But leveling the playing field for our less fortunate and citizens is out of the question. The voice of the English-speaking working class must be silenced. The useful idiots of foreign nations and languages serve our ruling class far better a purpose as we kneel before our golden calf. Quotation now from the GOP USA. "The arrogance of our ruling class. Clearly, among such people, the desire for a permanent underclass of uneducation and pliable illegal immigrants is merely an extenuation of their belief that the rest of America in reality is not much different. All of us out here in the hinterlands, whether legal citizens or illegal bond servants, only exist for the empowerment of and good pleasure of those enlightened individuals of our ruling class. And if America or Holton City wants anything different from its leadership, we had better say so in our election cycles in no uncertain terms." End of quote. "Our leaders were behind us, behind the people as we cured our ills, ills of the Titanic. Government favored the people who didn't appreciate 140-something women who burned alive in a four-story sweatshop in New York. Government supported us in creating a fair and righteous child labor laws. Remember how we used to treat them? And I honestly believe that if our leaders wasn't so caught up in this nasty, yiddish social-style plutocracy, the people might still be able to depend on its leadership. But they say our democracy will last only until those at the top believe the wealth of this nation belongs to them alone, thereby bankrupting our nation into extreme poverty." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Journay. Anyone else wish to speak in the visitor's citizens forum? Mr. Watkins, please identify yourself.
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Springs Circle. Just don't shock everybody, say something nice. I'd like to thank the Holton family on behalf of the, as an officer of the Verbal Historical Society. I'd like to thank the citizens that showed up, the volunteers, the musicians that worked. I'd like to thank Mayor Lanford and Ms. Branson for showing up. It was a real good party, and I hope we can do it again. The Holtons seemed to have a pretty good time, so it, I think it worked well, real well. And Wayne will probably let you comment, because it's a fact.
Well, it was a fact I was there, and it was a fact it was very enjoyable, and it is a fact I, too, am deeply appreciative of the Holton family for allowing that, the citizens to visit, visit their abode, and it is, it's a wonderful house. If that opportunity's ever presented again, I encourage everybody to take, take advantage of that. Anyone else would like to speak on the visitor's citizens forum? Seeing none, we'll close that and move on to the next item on the agenda, is item six, resignation of board members. We have any resignations tonight? See none, so we'll go to item seven, appointment or reappointment to boards of commissions. Have any appointments? I see none. The next item is item eight, excused absence of council members. We do have Councilman Dale Clark is sick tonight. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've talked with Dale. He's, he's pretty much under the weather, and it looks like he's going to be back in for some more business with the hospital later on in the week, so moved to approve his absence tonight.
Ms. Branson?
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Been moved and seconded to excuse the absence of Councilman Clark. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is item nine, to take action deemed necessary as a result of executive session. We met in executive session earlier, and I'm now going to recognize the city secretary, Brenda Dennis, and she's got a few words for us.
I asked for a few moments to say thank you to the most honorable council and mayor and citizens and volunteers of the city. I have given the council my resignation. I have accepted a position as city secretary for the city of Shirts, which is a town before you get to San Antonio. I will be able to actually join my husband and live with him, and also join my son, who is attending UTSA there. I have, I have learned an awful, awful lot here, and I take all the knowledge I've learned with Holton City with me, and know that I have the confidence in the things that the citizens, the county mayor and council, my staff and colleagues
You're doing good. Hang in there.
have done for me in the five years. I have, I invested a lot of time here in Holton City. I've seen it grow, and I see the wonderful vision that the staff has, the council has. The one thing I want to say to Holton City citizens is thank you for allowing me to be your friend, your city secretary. Please stay involved. Please get involved. Learn about the city. God bless you, and thank you.
Well, Brenda, we, we thank you, and actually, we, we got, we, we have something, a little something here that, that council would like to present to you in honor of your, your service, and as a good luck gift and parting gift to you. You have done a wonderful job, and the people of Shirts are certainly lucky to have you, and we're going to miss you.
Do you want me to open it here?
Sure.
Okay.
That's what it's for.
Okay, I got a gift mug, and it's a great picture of a horse. It says, "Are you sure you want to be the next person to get on my nerves?"
We thought you'd have a proactive strategy when you get onto Shirts. Get those council members in shape down there.
What's that? Humming, hummingbird and bluebonnets, huh? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Brenda. We appreciate you. And now then, we have the official duty to decide whether or not we want to accept Brenda's resignation. Mr. Hutchison?
So Mayor, if we don't accept it...
She has to give her gifts back.
Got it.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes, she actually asked if she could resign, so, so this is going to be tough to say, to say yes or no, because I don't want her to resign. But I do move that we accept her request to resign as city secretary from the city of Holton City. Mrs. Dennis?
Ms. Reese?
I'm going to second that and let you know I'm going to miss you a bunch, but I'll come see you.
Yeah, that's right on the way to San Antonio, isn't it? Okay. It has been moved and seconded to accept Brenda's resignation as city secretary. Is any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Good luck, Brenda.
Thank you.
Next, next item we have as a result of executive session is to appoint an interim city secretary. I'll now entertain a motion. Mr. Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we accept as interim city secretary, Ms. Donna Pliska, who is functioning right now as our assistant city secretary here in the city of Holton City.
And Mr. Sutton?
That'll be for a second.
It's been moved and seconded, yes.
Can you also add to it the salary level that we discussed in executive session, please?
Which is the, the minimum city secretary?
But for me, I need authorization. I can't do that on my...
Okay, yes. I add that to the second friendly amendment.
And I'll add that to the first, yeah.
Are we clear enough, Wayne, to vote on this?
Absolutely.
All right. We all, we all understand what we're voting for. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Mayor, that, that is temporary. I forgot to mention that, as a temporary interim. It's interim?
The position is interim, and the salary is interim.
Salary is a temporary, yes.
Everything about it is interim, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion or clarification? Seeing none, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. That concludes the regular agenda. We do have other items to address in executive session, so we will now go into executive session under sections 551-071, -072, and -074. We'll meet in executive session at 7:50.